The Board of Aldermen to order, if you would, please recite the pledge with me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff. I don't know that he's joined us yet. Mayor Zaring.
Present. All right, thank you. We have a quorum. First up, we've got some good ceremonial matters. Always good to do some police department badge pinning. So Chief, come on up.
Good evening, Board of Aldermen, Mayor, Mr. Ratliff, City Administrator. So we have two promotions tonight. We would like to introduce you to them. The first one is Michaela Krantz. She began her career in law enforcement in 2018. She attended the Cass County Academy and began working at HPD in September of 2020. Corporal Krantz will bring to the role of corporal a wide range of experience and versatility. She's worked as a patrol officer and as a dispatcher. We are excited to introduce HPD's first female corporal, Michaela Krantz. This evening Corporal Krantz will be badge by her husband Mark and her children, Remington, Carson, and Hayden. Our next promotion this evening is for Corporal Xavier Stein. He began working at HPD in January of 2023. Corporal Stein is not new to law enforcement, though. He became a sworn officer in 2021. Corporal Stein has a love for people, community, and police work. He has been and will continue to be a benefit to this community, the city, and the people he serves. We are pleased to introduce Corporal Stein, who will be badge tonight by his mother Angela. So we're waiting for our other person to show up because he was at the range all day and so he wanted to run home and shower. So we're just gonna buy a little time. So there's some other exciting news at the Harrisville Police Department. We have brought back two prior employees who came back on their own. We're very excited to have them. And I'm gonna wait to talk about the one that's running a little bit late. We had the other one who just had other stuff to do and he couldn't be here tonight. So that is Chris Osterberg. So Chris retired or left the department in January of '22. He had worked as a patrol officer, a patrol sergeant, investigations lieutenant, and he went on to pursue other opportunities. But he will be back as a sergeant with the Harrisville Police Department. Yay! What a good timing, then.
Yeah, it was a hot one today. He would have not wanted to come from the range.
No pressure, Chief. Everybody's looking at you.
So this is Detective Mike Arbuckle, and he began working for HPD in January of 2010. He worked as a patrol officer, a patrol sergeant, and was assigned as a detective in investigations until he left to pursue a career outside of law enforcement in October of '22. We're excited to welcome back Detective Arbuckle. His knowledge and expertise will serve the city and the Harrisville Police Department well.
All right, thanks, Chief. Congratulations to everybody there. We'll keep moving on here. Had no public participation. And we'll move on to the approval of minutes of the Board of Aldermen Regular Meeting, August 4th, 2025. Those are in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those stand. Next, we have the Board of Aldermen Minutes from the Work Session, August 4th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes, too, will stand. And moving on to the first agenda item, we have Council Bill 46.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the reappointment of Dale Franklin to the Historic Preservation Commission.
So with this here, again, we're gonna, we got several of these this evening to reappoint some board members. And again, we bring Dale Franklin, who's been dedicated, does a lot for the city, and is married to Sandy Franklin, I believe, right? So bring him before the board here as a recommendation for the Historic Preservation Commission.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Fauch. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff is excused. Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
I will abstain.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 46 is now Resolution 2025-17. Next up, we have Council Bill 47.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the reappointment of Amanda Stites to the Historic Preservation Commission.
All right, thank you. Again, bring Amanda Stites. I think we all know her. She's looking to be reappointed to the Historic Preservation Commission as well.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Davidson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff is excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 47 is now Resolution 2025-18. Next up, we have Council Bill 48.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the reappointment of Donna Fauch to the TIF Commission.
All right, thank you. And again, we bring Mrs. Fauch here before you to be reappointed. Does a lot for our community, present and past, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Franklin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Abstain.
Alderman Dorhoff is excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 48 is now Resolution 2025-19. Next, we have Council Bill 49.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the reappointment of Carol Looney to the Harrisonville Square Neighborhood Redevelopment Corporation.
All right, again, Carol and other dedicated citizens served on many boards within the community here. And we bring her before you tonight as well for reappointment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Milner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff is excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 49 is now Resolution 2025-20. Next up, we have Council Bill 50.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the reappointment of Josh Chastain to the Harrisonville Square Neighborhood Redevelopment Corporation.
All right. So again, we lift up Dr. Chastain to everybody here. I think we're all familiar with him. Again, he does a lot with us as well.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff is excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 50 is now Resolution 2025-21. Moving on to the next agenda item, I'm gonna open a public hearing on the 2025 tax levy. That is open.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. We've got a bit of housekeeping for you here tonight. Staff received the pro forma from the State Auditor's Office via the county for setting the tax levy for the 2025 year. This is, you know, just a general operation of the city to set the levy. We are not allowed to increase the levy beyond what the state auditor has calculated for us. The actual levy is going down this year based on higher assessments. So there's a calculation that they performed for us. We bring it in front of you all to approve and entertain any questions.
Any questions for Jeremy on this? Anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? That'd pretty much be the newspaper guy. So, okay, all right. Well, I'm gonna close the hearing on that. That's now closed. And we will, this is gonna be an administrative ordinance. We're gonna lift up Council Bill 51 to y'all.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
No, that threw me in. Let me do the first reading.
Okay.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville levying a tax for the current expense of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri upon real property and all tangible personal property of whatsoever nature and character, subject to taxation by the City of Harrisonville for such purposes. Also levying a special tax upon the aforementioned described properties for public parks for a total tax levy of 0.6085.
All right, thank you, sir.
Now I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass it to the second reading.
All right. Got a motion from Alderman Mills to suspend the rule on Council Bill 51 and take it to a second reading. Got a second from Alderman Davidson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Hey, there we go.
All right.
Second reading, thank you. An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville levying a tax for the current expense of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri upon real property and all tangible personal property of whatsoever nature and character, subject to taxation by the City of Harrisonville for such purposes. Also levying a special tax upon the aforementioned described properties for public parks for a total tax levy of 0.6085.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 51 is now Ordinance 3743. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Next up, Aldermen and Committee Reports. Let me go, Alderman Dorhoff will start with you so I don't forget about you there.
Thank you, sir. Nothing this evening. Sorry for being late. I just got off a meeting.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Chaney.
Nothing. Everybody knows school's back in session. It's a good time of year. We don't have anything, I guess.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Franklin.
Yeah, keeping with what Alderman Chaney said about schools starting, just be mindful of driving in the school areas and in and out of neighborhoods with the school buses and stuff. Be safe for the little kiddos that are on their way to school. So I also wanted to talk about the doggy dive. We had that on Saturday, and despite the heat, we did a good job. We had record-breaking count for the dogs. We had actually 57.
Oh, wow.
And we had, we made around $780, give or take a few dollars. Wanted to shout out a big thank you to Prairie Tales Spa and Apex Comics, the Harrisonville Animal Clinic and Garden Gate. They were our vendors there for the day. They all braved the heat and we had a great time. Everybody was talking and laughing and carrying on. Prairie Tales Spa brought a cockatoo, which thrilled the kids to no end. So, and if anybody saw the video on Facebook, he loved John Good's music, and he was swinging and swaying. They had a good time. And we also had City Sips was our food truck, and so was Shiver's Ice House. So they did good as well. So we enjoyed it. The dogs had a great time. They were out there. They loved every minute of it. So thank you for all of that and for all who participated. Thanks to Grant and Nicole and Kendra for all the work they did to help us out with getting the word out and flyers. And so appreciated all of it. Thank you. That's all.
Well, thank you for all your work on that, too. And we know how much you do, Alderman Franklin, so you are appreciated. Alderman Davidson.
Going with the schools beginning, she talked about school buses. Just to make sure you understand also, not only the school buses at the schools, but also the bus stops, what are they making up within the city and also out in the county, that you abide by the stop signs and the stoplights. Do very much want to enforce those. If somebody runs a stop sign or a stop light, in regards to those, they will be hopefully located. And because most of the school buses now have video, and so hopefully they will be contacted and prosecuted as such. So it's important to make schools safe, and that expands on out with the school buses as well. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Mills.
I just appreciate all the reporting and the newsletters and the department head and the photographs. Keeps me updated on what's going on everywhere. So it's, I appreciate those because, and I'm driving around town when I get back, I'm seeing some of those things for real. So that's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Turner. Alderman Fauch.
No report.
No report?
I have nothing.
Yeah, all right, nothing. All right. And we're gonna thank you all for your report. Appreciate all your all's commitment and work. And we're gonna turn it over to the City Administrator for his report now.
All right, next meeting will be on Tuesday night instead of a Monday night because September 1 is Memorial Day. So it will be closed, or excuse me, Labor Day, not Memorial. And then the fall citywide cleanup will be on the 6th of September, and then the 12th and 13th will be the fall brush drop. We'll also be having now at the airport, Wings and Wheels. You'll be seeing a lot more information coming on that out there at the airport on the 27th. And then a South Sanitary Sewer Project continues to move along like a snail and hopefully getting that thing buttoned up someday. Then the Royal Street Extension Project, still finalizing right-of-way purchase with the property owner. Change, the Blueberry has been moving very quickly, installing 42 and 36-inch water pipes as well as junction boxes and walls and relocating water lines. And so that project's moving really quickly. Ash Street, hopefully over the next couple of weeks, be moving forward with that one. And that will be, we've already had discussions with the school district on a lot of these, and once they go out, we'll be coordinating with them on bus routes. And then the Beckerdite Stormwater Drainage Improvement, the one property that was the discussion, staff had a discussion with me. I put on my lawyer's hat. I know you get worried when I hear that out.
Yeah, that kind of scared me.
And I said, I think that's a presciptive. And can we find the proof that we've been maintaining all this time? And we found proof that we've been maintaining it all this time. So we don't need any right-of-way in that area. So then the Asphalt Street Program is planned for mid to late September. So you'll be seeing that, those projects on the roads. South Extension Project, we submitted the project specifications to city staff. The engineer has for review. So staff is reviewing it. MoDOT Highway 2, currently having an appraiser, working with 11 property owners on that project. And we're hoping here within the next month to start getting that ready to be put out for bid. And so that'll hopefully be done pretty quick. The two abandoned aircraft out at the airport have been sold and removed. And so that's no longer a problem out there at the airport. Locate, I don't think everybody completely, fully understands the hammering that Public Works is being done right now with the locates that are going on, with the cable companies, with the broadband companies. We, on average, do about 30 locates a week. They're doing 185 to 300 a week. It's just, and we don't have dedicated staff that just do locates. So this takes them off, street guys off of street projects, it takes water guys, water projects, takes electric guys off of electric projects. So it backs them up in a lot of areas because we, by law, have to have those things marked within a certain time period. The companies that are in town and the contractors that have been working are horrible. And city staff is doing a lot of babysitting, doing a lot of, it's a huge problem. And so we're doing the best we can, but I just want to remind everybody, the state legislature has made it less and less for you all to determine how you control your right-of-ways. And they keep going every year and doing more. They're even telling us now what we can charge and how much we can charge and where we can cap it off, and it's not gonna get any better. And so when people complain to you, tell them to call their state senator and call their state rep and tell them to leave our right-of-ways alone and let us govern our own. Because right now, it used to be we could charge 5%, and now they're gonna cap that at 2.5% on those, on the franchise fees. Because all you're doing is mowing that. You don't need to do any more. So they convinced the legislators to pass a law to do that. As you all know, it's not just mowing. It's property in which the residents of this area own. And the reason that the telecoms go into our right-of-way is because it's a whole lot cheaper and it's a whole lot quicker. Because I tell the legislators, there's one way around it. Tell them to get their own easements. Well, they're never gonna do that because it's a lot less expensive and less work for them. So we're doing the best we can with the ability that we have within the laws to be able to do that, but it is a problem. So if people tell you about it, we're well aware of it. We're doing our best to manage it. I know Public Works is already, I mean, Jeremy, two crews have been kicked out to them already.
Yeah, and one of them twice.
Yeah. We even had one crew that had a 10-year-old and a 12-year-old out there in the right-of-way. And we had to tell them you can't.
With a vest on and carrying tools.
Yes. So it's been, it's been very problematic. The problem is, there's not a lot we can do other than keep doing what we're doing. But it's taking up a lot of Public Works' time and efforts and other projects that they're trying to get done. And there's no end in sight that's coming up on it. So just want to keep you guys aware of it. It is a problem. We're aware of it, but I don't know how else we're gonna deal with it other than what we're doing. And I know in the end, everybody wants fiber to the home, and that's great, but it's gonna be a nightmare getting there.
Are they gonna duplicate the fiber that is already underground?
Oh, yeah. They're crossing across each other in town already.
So the people that have had their yards dug up once are gonna have it again? Or did they install a conduit where they can just look around?
No, that's their own conduit. You can't, they won't share.
They're not set multiple boxes or one of those things on a building.
Yes.
Yes.
Can we, can we make sure that they don't block the view coming out of streets, like the two boxes that we have at the onset of our subdivision? We've got a big electrical box and then the new, whatever the new fiber box is. And we've had, how many wrecks out there now?
Bunch.
Yeah, there's probably been four to five. They sit like right, literally out by the road where they block the view of traffic coming in on seven.
In most cases, they're putting in ground-level vaults. I have seen a few pedestals. I don't know what they use to dictate their criteria for when. But anytime there's an impingement on view of anything, that we definitely want to hear about that, and then we'll try to put that out. And then obviously, Public Works staff, Christina, will take a look and we'll get them to change those out.
Yeah, because it's bad.
They've actually let them rip some fiber coaxers out because they went right along our water lines.
Yeah.
And we're like, no, you can't do that. So we're doing our best to manage it, but I can tell you right now, Public Works is about to pull their hair out.
Oh, I bet.
Yeah, we currently have now standing meetings with each company on Wednesdays each week and to try to address as many of those with the management side of those, and then they try to take that out to the field staff. That is probably where the biggest disconnect happens is usually, you know, these subcontractors get paid by the foot. They don't, you know, that, so they are in a hurry to get it done. And so we will unfortunately be left with their mess long after they're gone. I think the biggest fear for our staff from a Public Works standpoint is that it's real obvious when they hit a power line. It's very obvious when they hit a water line usually. As long as they hit it significantly, it's not gonna be as obvious when they hit a sewer service, especially like an old it's not gonna be as obvious when they hit a sewer service, especially like an old clay service. So those are things that are gonna come along later. And then once we go through and then start trying to dig up and repair, when they've gotten too close to our lines and stuff like that, that's gonna be problematic for us.
Have you heard of the couple of gas lines?
A couple might be the understatement of the week. I feel like it's a couple about every other day.
I would say it does, so far.
I would say at least two a week.
What did you do on these gas lines?
We didn't have enough service, and so we became the new kid on the block to try to get all of it in here before the other ones. So I said, in the end, everyone may be happy that they got fiber to the home, but it may be a nightmare to get there.
I've got, I don't know whether to call it a lawyer or whatever, to complain about section of his yard. It was a pretty large section because they missed the locate. They didn't have to be bored enough to find it because the locate was wrong. And now it's got a big hole, sinkhole, where it's all settled. And I don't know what to do. I'll talk to the city, but I said I could bring some dirt.
Well, and those companies, their intent, and they told us on the front end, is they will come do their digging, put stuff back, and then they'll let the dirt settle, and then they'll have to come back again. Now, that's where things get, you know, risky, is getting them to come back again in, you know, four, six months, a year to actually correct a lot of those things. That's yet to be seen. But that was, that was a known issue that was gonna come up, that people are gonna say, look, I've got this mound of dirt or whatever it is, or a low spot, and that's gonna, you know, because right now they're using hydro vacs in a lot of these cases, or at least the bigger companies, and that, so that material's leaving, right? So, you know, and we hope it leaves. We hope they don't dump it in areas they're not supposed to. That happens, too. So, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to this, and we're doing the best we can. I would have to shout out Matt Carver. He is bearing the brunt of all of this. I assist where I can and, you know, try to, you know, stand on the city's position on all these things and, you know, hold them accountable. But he's the guy out there going and seeing all these things. And so if you see him, give him a nod and a thank you.
Should I respond to this guy, give it six months and see what happens?
I would still give us that information and let us, give that back to them and let them go. We'll put it on their radar to go deal with it.
Well, he said Matt's been out there a couple of times, so.
Okay, well, if, I mean, if we've already seen it, then we've probably already put it on there. We're not gonna.
Documented, too.
Yeah, I mean, documented, but it's gonna be hard to satisfy everyone every second of every day. It's a lot going on.
You're gonna deal with people that believe the easement is their yard, and you get into that whole battle, too.
Hey, Jeremy, this individual that's in Ward One actually gave a shout-out to Matt that he was great to deal with. He wasn't trying to be a problem person, just once his yard fixed after his contractor hit the sewer line and they had to dig up a big chunk of yard.
Right.
Our guys, our guys are doing great, but they are frustrated.
Yeah, I bet.
All right, so just wanna keep you guys abreast of that because it's been very staff-intensive on these broadband companies at town. Then Parks has supported Section of Sidewalk out there, T-Mobile Project, and as well some five-disc off T-Pads out at Lord's Park as well. With that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
That's it. All right, thank you, sir. Municipal Court Report from July is in your packets. Questions from the media? Okay. We'll get you the answers. Thank you, sir. All right.
Okay, Your Honor, I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn to closed session. We've got two different ones tonight, so bear with me. Closed session pursuant to RSMO six one zero point zero two one one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys. And then the second reason is for RSMO six one zero zero two one one two, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, and sealed proposals and related documents, or any documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected. And I understand we're going to the conference room.
No, we're gonna stay in here.
We're staying in here.
We've got some people online here, so.
Okay.
Yep. We're staying here. All right, got a motion from Alderman Mills. With a second from Alderman Davidson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We are now in executive session, so we'll take a few minutes, clear everybody out, and we'll get started.
What's it?